Okay, everyone, let's call the meeting. We stand for political allegiance.
What was that? Political allegiance to flag of the United States of America. And republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome all. If there is anyone who would like to address the board, this is public comment. So please step up to the microphone and if you could use the sign and shape, please. The reason for that is that we would like to spell your name correctly in the minutes. And then if you could also identify yourself when you get there. Thank you.
Sure. I'm Teri Everett, and I just have a couple of questions. Has anybody done a study as to the psychological effect on eight, nine-year-olds riding 45 minutes each way or longer on a bus with children who are not their peers, they're four or five years older than them, you know, the 12- and 13-year-olds? I know that my own daughter, we had issues when she became a seventh grader and rode on the bus with some seniors in high school. There were a lot of issues that came up that probably should not have happened for another two or three years due to the fact of the immaturity level of seventh grader on a bus with seniors in high school. Now you're adding, you know, eight, nine-year-olds whose maturity level just isn't there, their cognitive reasoning isn't there, their emotional maturity isn't there to compete and hold their own with 12, 13, and 14-year-olds on a bus. Also, 45 minutes to an hour for someone who's living in Camp Bethel to come here. I don't know how many of you drive an hour to work twice, you know, back and forth. Most people don't. Most people drive within a half hour, 15 minutes to a half hour. You know, proximity of homes to a school and to work are primary when people look for a place to live in town. I see that as a detriment. I see also that we're still going to need tax dollars no matter what. I see homes being deevaluated and the mill rate going up to make up the difference. It just doesn't, it does, this doesn't add up to me as far as closing the school. I get it, I'm a business owner, I understand numbers, you can make numbers sing and you can make them sink. I also own a tax accountant, so therefore I do understand your numbers. I don't understand how you got your numbers. The town of Wallenford is, they're going through something similar and they're inviting the public. I only heard about this because someone came into my store and said, "What is the effect of Haddon Elementary closing going to do to your business?" I had no clue it was closing. That's how quiet and secluded this was for me, and I'm a business in the center of town. I should not have found out about this from a customer who came in. I think that, you know, towns do ebb and flow, and we're right now in an ebb. When Connecticut Yankee, they closed, they shut down, we went into an ebb, housing values went down, my house depreciated 25 percent. It took a while, but it came back up. What I saw, Haddon Elementary go from minimally, minimal classrooms to over, oversized classrooms, where you had to bring in pods. We're right now in an ebb. Is this a knee-jerk reaction to the ebb? When we, when more people start to come in and families are starting later in life, in the mid to late 30s, are we going to find ourselves in the, oh, we're going to have to add pods to BURG? We may have to buy it back, Haddon Elementary from whatever company buys it. Case in point, my junior high in high school, when I was in California, my junior high, the town went through a huge ebb. They sold off the junior high. Three years later, they had to buy it back at triple the price they sold it for. It is still a junior high now, and that was, I've been out, I'm out of school, let's face it. We don't want to grow that age. But that's what I'm, I don't want this to be a knee-jerk response to the fact that we have a low student enrollment at this point in time. And to attract the families that we need to bring the enrollment up, again, proximity to a school, proximity to work, those are your driving forces everywhere you live. I like living in the woods, but I never drove more than a half an hour to work, and my children never were on the bus longer than 20 minutes, whether it be the elementary school, the middle school, the high school. That's, to me, something that's very, very critical to this town. I don't want it to see it become a ghost town. I don't want to see it become, God forbid, I hate to use the word Jewett City. Jewett City is depressed. I don't want this town to be this way. It's a beautiful town. I keep, you know, I'm trying to get even my, you know, my employees who live out of town to buy in town. I like the argument with closing of HES. You know, there, there are rumors that two large businesses in town are going to leave, fold and go if HES closes. From what I read in the patch today, it looks like it's a done deal. I hope it's not. I hope everybody has an open mind and can look into the psychological damages to a child on a bus, 45 minutes minimum, like from Camp Bethel to here, with all the pit stops and everything else. There are psychological damages that can happen to them, the stress on the families. I'm more than willing to, you know, fork in a little more on the tax dollars. I have property in Haddon, I have property in Higgins, I have no problem with it if it means the equality of education, the lower classrooms. When we moved here, my daughter was in fourth grade, her classroom capped out, she was the last student allowed in, 22 students, that was it. We came from California where her classroom had 35 students, one-third spoke English, the rest were all different languages, no parents. We come here, BURG, she had two parents and a classroom of size of 22. She's excellent.
Teri, I hate to have to do this, but I know you may not be familiar with some of our policies around these meetings, but we have a five minute duration for speaker. I don't mean to interrupt you, I apologize for doing so, but I want to be able to give others a chance to speak.
Yeah, sure. What I'm asking is you have an open mind and not have this gas in concrete and get the town's input. That would be awesome.
If I may, I just want to respond to one piece, just to just a point of clarification is all. All of the current designs around transportation do not have the intermediate school of fourth and fifth grade students on buses with middle school students.
Okay, that's good to know.
And so...
So four, five, and six are on their own bus?
But kindergarteners, kindergarteners will be on the bus with fifth graders.
No, right now, the models would do it, maybe on the bus with elementary school students, which is, fourth, they're already on, fourth graders are already on the school with elementary school students.
Kindergarteners will be on the bus with fifth graders.
With fifth graders.
Yes, and special ed is going to Killingworth from Haddon, that's where they hang off for just a minute. That presents a problem. High... Preschool, excuse me. Four-year-olds are going to Killingworth.
Hit it.
Preschool, preschool.
Hi, Andrew Bizarro, I've pre-sold my first meeting, we just moved to town, and so I wanted to just come and say, as someone who moved to town, my son is a year and a half old, and when we came to look at the house that we bought, we actually drove past the Haddon Elementary school, and I had this moment where I actually got emotional like I am now in the car, and it was just like, oh my goodness, like Henry's going to go to school here, and this is such a cute little town, and, you know, we've only been here four months, and now all of this news about the school closing has come up, and it's just, you know, made us wonder, like, did we just make a huge mistake, or, you know, what's going on? And we moved before we were in Stanford, and we really wanted to, like, downsize our life and find a nice little community and just be there. And so, you know, for us, it feels a little emotional, like we just upheveled everything to come here and do this and to hear that the school was closing, and, you know, I don't know the town that well, I just moved here, and so we're trying to educate ourselves and learn about what happened, and, you know, I know personally two other families who have located here with young children who are excited about the school system, and it's just kind of shocking to me that, you know, growing up in Connecticut, this area had such a good reputation for education that there would be such a tussle like this between the Board of Education and the town, and so for me, as a new resident, it just seems a little disturbing that all of this is going on, and to hear some of the rumors about, you know, a lot of these decisions were made on, like, one college study, and like, that it's a knee-jerk reaction, and all of these things, everything that she just said, I've heard around town and I've seen on, you know, social media and being shared through the different local newspapers, and it's just, you know, as a new resident of the town, it is a little bit disheartening, and a little emotional as a young family that, like, you know, did we just make a huge mistake moving to the town? And so I hope that the studies you're doing and the data you're looking at are considering the people who are moving here with children, because, you know, when we moved here, it was just like, you know, even our realtor had gone to the schools and had them, and he was telling us how great it was to grow up here and do all those things, and now it just seems like, you know, I hope that it's just being blown out of proportion and we just don't understand it fully yet, but right now, it just feels like, oh no, what if we just made a huge mistake? And so I felt like I would have been remiss if I didn't come to any meeting at least just make that heard, but I hope that you're considering that, because I've read a lot about birth rates and all of this stuff, but that's not the only place that you're getting children to go to the schools, and populations do ebb and flow, as I'm sure you know, and I hope that it's not a reaction to just make dollars stretch more and that there really is a quality decision being made for the children in the town.
My name is Ken Gaudner. I just thought I'd clear up some of the quotes that have been attributed to me.
Sorry, Deb.
I think what we have here is a permanent solution to a temporary problem, and I'll tell you, just go cover that for a second. In Connecticut, I'm a demographer, and I write books, I do research, I speak all over the country. Connecticut has a population of about three and a half million people, the United States has a population of about 330 million people, when you count the illegals, and demographers do. We're like 1 percent, and we're almost an exact representation of the United States. The only real difference between Connecticut and the United States is the Latinos that we have in Connecticut are Puerto Ricans, and the predominant Latinos in the rest of the country are Mexicans. That's the only difference. What's going to happen in Connecticut, and when it will happen, and it'll probably happen within seven to 10 years, is you're going to see an increase in the population, because the largest population ever born in the United States was born 1985 to 2004. They're called millennials or generation Y, and they're only now leaving home, throwing away all those trophies they don't deserve, and getting married, big promise. But you're going to see it in influx. In talking to Joanne and talking to Suzanne, I know you've taken that into account, I really do, and you're, and when it comes to the decision-making between closing BURG or closing HES, you've taken that into account, and rightly so. I live in a world of numbers, I live in a world of objectivity, I live in a world of, if there were three different types of reasoning, it would be logos, ethos, and ethos, we've all learned that in school. Well, I live in a, in a world of logos, of logic, and numbers, but my appeal to you today is not there, it's in the ethos part of it. My gut just tells me it's wrong to close that school, because I think psychologically, and for right now, and I'm not just asking you to put it off, and I don't know what the answer is, but I think closing that school psychologically is a mistake for our town, because it's the biggest sign of life in the entire town. If you drive past the empty buildings and the empty storefronts, if we see any more of that, I don't know what that's going to do to us, I really don't, and I would encourage you to reconsider.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. I think we'll move on with our agenda then, if there's no one else who is planning to talk forward. Could I get a motion to move up item 5A under new business, the special education student services presentation, please? Can I get a second?
I will.
You all in favor by show of hands? Any host?
Okay. Chris, welcome. Thank you.
If I can set the context of this presentation a little bit?
Sure.
So last December, we followed up our September and October continuous improvement and data work with a follow-up presentation on student services in a variety of ways. This year, given the board's current work in a different domain around strategic planning and establishing strategic priorities for the coming years, one of the areas that you've definitely zoomed in on, and rightfully so, is student developmental and emotional learning, mental health, mental wellness, that domain. And one of the things we talked about in those meetings was providing you with some information around what is the context of that within a school system, on a sort of national landscape a little bit, but also on a local context. Because this isn't going to be the whole kit and caboodle for everything you need to know about this, but it's a great start to that conversation. We also have a article we're going to share with you that, again, provides a little bit of research-based thought around what best practices can look like, and this will give you, the next time we get together for strategic planning, this just moves you, moves your pieces just a little further down the road for prior knowledge to think about where do we go next tomorrow in each month. So we invited Dr. Lindsay, our student services director, I got that right, I just hear that, student services. And she's going to put together a presentation, and we invite conversation and questions.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
My pleasure. So, as was just said, I'm going to talk to you about social emotional wellness and mental health in our district. To get started, I'd like to just introduce some people who are with me tonight. Tanya Gorgoni is working the computer for the slideshow, she's the coordinator of student services, and certainly my partner in putting this together. Daily Nelson is a district school psychologist, who's very instrumental in a piece of this that I'm going to talk to you about in a few minutes, so I would very appreciate it that you could.
Chris, excuse me for just a second, if you want to stand so you can see the screen, you're welcome to.
Yeah, however you're comfortable.
Wherever you're comfortable. I'm sorry.
Sure. And so my objectives are really to provide you with a better understanding of social emotional wellness in this district. I'm going to talk a little bit about the systems we have in place now, and I plan to talk a little bit about mental health trends in our district, as well as nationally. So to start, I thought it would be really helpful to have a common definition, because when we talk about social emotional wellness, we provide that through social emotional learning. So that's really the process through which students learn how to manage their emotions, set goals, how they learn to become empathetic, establish positive relationships with peers and with adults, and make responsible decisions, and we teach that through direct construction and also through opportunities to practice. And we embed that throughout the classroom and the school community. And it's really important to impart these skills so students can succeed in their classrooms and their schools throughout their entire lives. So we really see it as a long-term investment in our children. So we address their social emotional wellness primarily through three different methods, and it comprises our scientific research-based intervention system. We use prevention for all students, we use intervention for students who start to have some difficulties, and intensive support is for our students who need deeper levels of care. So at the prevention level, we're really talking about supporting all students. Every student in our district receives some form of prevention, and that's our proactive way to ensure that our students are set up for success. So all of our schools have a positive school climate initiative, or PBIS, that is part of their daily activities. We provide social emotional learning instruction through Second Step Curriculum, and that's actually delivered by Daily Nelson at all of our elementary schools in grades K through four, and next year will be K through five, as well as preschool.
Are you going to talk a little bit more about that later?
About which piece?
About this.
A little bit more, but I'm going to see questions at the end, of course. Classroom routines and management, including morning meetings, multiple opportunities for families to come into school and partner with teachers and administrators and other service providers, as well as annual screenings to identify students who are at risk, which is something we're looking to put into place at the start of next year. So Second Step, as I know you were asking some questions. It's an evidence-based program for students in K5. It really looks to integrate social emotional learning into their classrooms and school days. It's meant to decrease problem behaviors from occurring and to promote school success and safety. Second Step is something that we were using in this district previously as part of our developmental guidance program. Components of Second Steps were used and other resources were pulled from outside materials as well. And so this year, the change is really implementing it with fidelity, as opposed to bringing in those outside influence.
Chris, excuse me for just a second. Folks, we are trying to conduct a meeting here, so if you could please keep your voices down so that Dr. Lindsay can put her presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, Chris.
We're all right.
We're good?
Okay. Intervention is our next level of support, and that's something we provide for students who are starting to show some red flags. We're getting the sense that something might be amiss, they might be starting to demonstrate some behaviors that are cause for concern, and so we really want to be able to wrap some support around them. And that starts out through our SRBI process. We refer the students to the team, and we get a mental health staff member involved at that point. And their involvement varies, but typically will occur things like observing the student, providing some consultation to the classroom teacher or other people who work with the student, creating a behavior support plan that's usually really designed individually for the student, that might provide them with rewards or incentives in order to make some behavioral improvements, could include time-limited counseling, or even just check-ins with a mental health person, and most certainly, it involves a partnership with the parents, because we want to reach out, make sure they're aware of the concerns, talk about whether they have a sense of why the concern is maybe happening, is it happening at home as well, so that as we're strategizing in the school setting, we also want to help parents strategize at home, so that there's consistency and continuity for the students.
So how are these, how is it that these students are identified for?
It's a great question. So they're identified typically through teacher referrals. Sometimes parents reach out to the teacher, sometimes the teacher raises the red flag herself, himself, could be a specials teacher seeing a recurring difficulty that's been emerging. It really could be anybody who feels that the child is floundering. And the key, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit more, is is the child floundering in a way that impacts that child's education? And that's really the piece that we put a careful lens on, because we want to make sure that that child has what he or she needs in order to be more successful.
Now, would that definition also include impacting someone else's education?
It could. I'm going to get a little bit more into that in a moment. At this level, we typically have students who are at a lower level. You're seeing some behaviors, you're seeing some concerns, there might be some social difficulties. So this is still a lower level. We're going to move up the ladder, and we're going to talk about disruptiveness a little bit more later, because that can become a major concern. So again, just for clarification, when I talk about mental health staff members, I want to make sure we understand what our resources are in this district. We currently have five school psychologists, district-wide psychologist, and then one in each of our buildings. We have a school social worker at the middle school and high school, so too. We have 6.5 school counselors spread across the middle school and the high school, and we have a board-certified behavior analyst who works with the entire district. Okay. So then, when a student has received interventions and we find that that student hasn't made progress, or the student continues to have these areas of concern, we really ramp up the support, and that's when it gets to the intensive level. That is going to really dramatically increase the level of mental health staff involvement at that point. The person will probably observe the student across multiple settings, or more than once in a school day or a school week, trying to get a sense of patterns, trying to identify triggers that may be causing the behaviors to occur. For sure, the behavior support plan is going to be revised, sometimes they need to be revised on a weekly basis, because what works for a student one day may not work the next day. So we have to be creative and proactive. Many times, we refer the family to Youth and Family Services of Haddon Killingworth, they can be a really powerful partner in making sure that kids get some additional resources. We also will make referrals sometimes to other outside resources, depending on how the family wants to go. We'll make sure they understand what's available to them locally, if there's a private practitioner they'd like to work with, if they have particular insurance concerns that narrow down their choices, they're having trouble navigating wait lists, we try to be as helpful as we can. We also provide daily or weekly check-ins with students, continued counseling services, consult with our board-certified behavior analysts for additional strategies, and increase parent involvement, so that, again, we're making sure the child is supported across settings. So what you're really seeing is we have a base level support for everybody, we have intervention, then we have intermittent intensive support, so we're upping the ante in each case to try to help the child. In the event that none of those things work, it becomes important to consider a referral to special education. And so the National Association of School Psychologists gives a really good definition, I think, of when it's time to consider a referral, and they really talk about when the student's behaviors have changed in intensity, in frequency, or in duration. They talk about behaviors occurring for a significant period of time, which tends to be three to six months. If the student hasn't responded to increasingly intensive interventions that were really specific to that child, if it's interfered with the student's academic and social functioning, we know it might be time to move forward. If it appears to be beyond the student's control, might be another time that we decide to move forward, and certainly if it's presented a danger to other students, that there's a safety concern that really needs more careful grouping. I've spoken before to this board when we did a special education presentation, I think it was last spring, about child find requirements, and basically what that says is, if we believe that a student may be eligible for special education services, it's our job to identify those students and evaluate those students. And so that's why it's important that as we try increasingly intensive interventions, if they don't work, we then move to this next step. So I wanted to give you a quick data snapshot to talk about where we are today, which was actually yesterday that I gathered this information. So out of 370 students who are eligible for special education in this district, we have 135 who are eligible due to various disabilities that impact emotional, social, or behavioral functioning, to the extent that it impacts their academic progress, their ability to access their education. This really needs to be understood as an underestimation, though, because many times, students are eligible under other learning categories, but the behaviors or the social emotional difficulties may still exist. Another way to look at this that might be helpful is out of 370 eligible students, 212 received counseling services in school. This is a very significant underrepresentation, though, because it doesn't include all the students who have a 504 plan that includes counseling, or all of our students who receive counseling through regular education services. So quite a few, our mental health staff members are certainly very busy. I found this quote, and it's actually embedded in the article that I'm going to pass out to you, that I thought really captured my experiences, and certainly the experiences of my colleagues in Khan Case very well, and that is that while we can ask why this is occurring, there's a lot of debate as to why we're seeing... why we're seeing this increase, there's no doubt that the numbers are increasing across all districts across the country. And not only is the number of students growing, the severity of their needs is increasing, and we're seeing it occur at a younger age than we used to. And I find that this is very true, I changed, I know, in our district where we're seeing students with significant behavior difficulties that can interfere with their ability to access their education, to relate to other students and adults, and many times remain safe in the school setting, which is such a huge priority for us. So I had a meeting every month I meet with the mental health staff, and we just do some troubleshooting, we review cases, we just generally consult. And so I conducted a very informal focus group, if you will, with the mental health staffs. And I asked them, what are the kinds of things that you're seeing that are coming across your radar on a daily basis? Things that students are exhibiting behaviorally that give you cause for concern? And so this was a list that they identified. And the number one issue, second to none, really, was anxiety. They are seeing high levels of kids who are feeling anxious about a variety of things. And they're seeing physical symptoms related to that, so stomach aches or headaches, feeling faint, feeling nervous. And that can result in a lot of nurse visits, which is time lost in class, certainly, class avoidance, especially if there's a particular subject that seems to be triggering the anxiety. And in some cases, can even result in school avoidance, which can become very difficult to remediate. They're seeing an increase in students with anger and aggression, and that can be unsafe behaviors. That's mostly at the elementary level where our young friends don't always have the tools for expressing themselves. And so they're very frustrated, and then they start to act out in ways that they shouldn't. We see disruptiveness in acting out, speaking to your question before, and that can be very problematic, not just for that child's education, but for everyone's education. We're seeing an attention or disengagement in learning and weak social skills and coping skills that really need to be shored up and taught. In addition, we're seeing children not necessarily being accountable for some of their mistakes, so this sense of deflecting blame, not always feeling remorse, and so then not always being great at making things better. So that if you make a poor choice with a classmate, it's important to be able to say, you know, I did the wrong thing, and apologize to that classmate and make it right. But I find that's really hard for a lot of kids. And so our job is to work through that with them. We see disrespect towards peers and adults. And what's interesting about that is it's not usually towards all adults. Usually, there's a, there might be the classroom teacher as an adult who's treated with respect, and it might be some of the related service staff around them, especially paraprofessionals, who get treated differently by the child. And so we need to teach them that's not okay. We see difficulty tolerating the word "no" or delayed gratification, trouble losing or wanting to exert control. A poor locus of control, the sense that they can't impact their life events to come up with a better outcome. So this sort of powerless feeling. And that can, that can also include pervasive negativity or depression, difficulty goal-setting, and trouble bouncing back when things get tough. So these are all some of the things that kids are presenting within counseling sessions or as they're working their way through the tiers of SRBI. So many times, eligibility for special education due to emotional disturbance, which is one of the primary disability categories, is related to an underlying psychiatric condition, not always, but usually. And I asked the mental health staff, what are they seeing regarding that? What are the frequent flyers and conditions that seem to be impacting our kids? Again, anxiety was by far number one. They're also seeing, compared particularly to years past, more oppositional defiant disorder, depression, mood dysregulation, and in some smaller cases, reactive attachment disorder. And this can, of course, always be complicated by high school level if you have students who are starting to dabble with some substance use that can really intensify their symptoms and cause poor choices.
Dr. Nelson?
Yes.
Do you need to look back at that slide? That slide might also be a good way to circle back to something that was said earlier. Eligibility for special education under the emotional disturbance heading, these are some of the things that can lead to that. Many of the things on this slide, also in a different type of student who doesn't get labeled emotionally disturbed, can also lead to a 504 plan that she references. Some of the students accessing the services she described aren't caught in their special education numbers because instead, they're caught under 504 plans. 504 is Section 504 of the American with Disabilities Act, and it allows students access to services and accommodations due to a medical diagnosis. And so anxiety can be a medical diagnosis, depression can be a medical diagnosis. It may not result in emotional disturbance-type behavior, but instead result in inability to access their education in other ways, and so they end up with a 504 plan. And so therefore, it's another layer that she pointed out a couple of slides ago that this just nicely illustrated it. It was a good time to get that done.
Yes, thank you. And I think, too, I can't stress enough that every child is different. So one child with anxiety is going to look remarkably different from another child with anxiety, and they may not need the same levels of support. And some children may not even be detected at all because they seem to feel fine when really they're feeling anxious internally. So currently, in our district, we have 30 students eligible for special education services due to emotional disturbance. And I was really interested to see if this data was consistent with state prevalence data, and it was the exact same number. So we are right on par with state averages in that regard. But again, you have to remember, this is likely an underrepresentation because not all students who would qualify under emotional disturbance do. Sometimes there's another eligibility category selected instead. We only pick one. You need to identify what the team feels is the primary disability. Students with emotional disturbance can be very challenging to program for because they have a lot of needs, and those needs can change on a daily basis. But typically, they need intensive school supports, including certainly the counseling that I've talked about already, psychiatric evaluations, BCBA consultation, all kinds of outside mental health supports and treatments. And it's not uncommon for a student to work with three or four outside providers. And so we make sure that we try to consult with each and every one of them because they all have a different lens. And the goal is to coordinate care so the child has maximum support across settings. And sometimes, in extreme cases where kids are really having trouble being safe, we'd see some protective holds or the need for an alternative learning environment. And it's important to know that this really becomes important, and we really work hard to support these kids because if we can't, we have to then consider an out-of-district placement, which we really don't like to do. So I want to talk a little bit about autism. The prevalence of autism has significantly increased throughout the state over the last seven years. Tanya and I actually went to a presentation about this last fall, and they really talked about how those numbers have jumped. And the belief is that that's because schools have just become a lot better at identifying it, not that there's necessarily more students with autism. We currently have 33 students diagnosed with autism in our district, which is very consistent, again, with state prevalence data, so we continue to be right on par. Students with autism may have additional diagnoses as well, so it's often not just one thing, there could be a variety of things that come with that. And again, students with autism can be greatly different. Some have very few needs, some don't need special education at all, some have very profound needs and are nonverbal. So everybody's very different, and we program for the child in front of us. But it is important to note that in many cases, they exhibit challenging behaviors, and they tend to need comprehensive services. So kind of all of the services we offer, counseling, special education instruction, speech and language, pathologist intervention, occupational therapy, physical therapy, so this can become a very complex program to make sure we're doing everything we need to do for these kids. One of the things the mental health staff brought up that I thought was so important and I really wanted to share with you today is it's really not about numbers, per se. It's really about the intensity of a given student's needs. You can have a very small number of students with intensive social, emotional, behavioral needs that really require significant resources and can really pull human resources to the point where sometimes, briefly, there might be other students whose services are interrupted because we have a student in crisis who needs help in that very moment. Okay, so this is interesting. This is a snapshot of the 2018-19 year, again, as of yesterday. So this isn't the complete school year, this only brings us to yesterday. So so far, we've had 17 board-certified behavior analysts, consultations, observations for evaluations. We've had three behavior technicians work with students for a period of time. We've had four psychiatric consultations. Oops, that's my drum roll, sorry, I thought that was off. It's nice accompaniment.
It sounds true. Life should have a soundtrack.
That's right. So four psychiatric evaluations, we've had two neuropsychological evaluations, and currently we have 12 students outplaced, which is a little bit lower than we usually are for this time of year.
Are all the numbers above for this time of year or the outplacement?
The outplacement is low for this time of year. Yep. Okay. So I wanted to also talk a little bit about what belongs to school and what belongs to outside providers or private providers. And I spoke to that a little bit before. And the essential difference is that our staff members provide counseling support when a student's social, emotional, behavioral difficulties are impacting school. So there needs to be an educational impact. There could be very important and very troubling things going on in a student's life that doesn't impact their education. And so that's a time where outside services are warranted instead. Sometimes, a student has a difficulty that is impacting home and school, and so then a combination becomes important. But we provide referral information, as I said before, and help families guide through this process. And I just listed a few of the outside resources that we've referred parents to in the past, but this would really be an exhaustive list because there are so many people that we could refer to. Certainly, Youth and Family Services of Haddon-Killingworth is often a first contact. 211 Mobile Psychiatric Services. ICAPS, which provides home-based support to families. Clifford Beers, Joshua Center, Yale Child Study Center, Social Learning Center, many, many wonderful skilled private practitioners. So there's a great many people that we can connect families to that way. And as I said, many students need help. They need school and private. So as a district, we do a lot of things to address the needs of these students, and we're always trying to be creative and always trying to think outside the box because everybody's different. And I've mentioned some of these things before, but just to kind of go through all of the things we do for our kids who have acute mental health challenges, we have a whole range of counseling services, behavior plans, BCBA services, we refer to special education if that becomes warranted. We do functional behavior assessments to try to find the underlying cause of the behavior so we can remediate it, psychiatric evaluations, and then safety assessments and protocols if we feel that the student might be unsafe or we feel like the staff members might be unsafe. We also have increased paraprofessional support for some of our kids. Some of them need one-to-one support. Sometimes, there's a referral to the Department of Children and Families if we think there might be abuse or neglect based on what the child is reporting. In extreme cases, there's restraint, seclusion, or exclusionary timeout, only if safety is an immediate factor. Ongoing parent communication and meetings, consultations, alternative transportation, so a different bus if a student can't tolerate the regular school bus. Sometimes, we have a bus monitor for increased supervision, and we might even install special safety equipment to keep the student safe and to make sure the student doesn't harm anybody else. Ultimately, our most restrictive measure is an outplacement. But again, we do all of these various things in an effort to avoid that whenever we can. So over the last year and a half, we've implemented a few things just in response to some of the changing needs that we've been seeing. One of the ones that I think is really important is physical management training, which is known as PMT. In the past, we only provided that to staff members who worked with students who were known to be aggressive. But I like all of our staff members to receive that. Not all of them do, but a greater group does than before because they teach de-escalation strategies. And my goal is to equip our staff with the skills they need to be able to stop a student from escalating to the point that a restraint or seclusion is ever needed. And so that's really important. We replaced the former school counselor who did the developmental guidance program that I was speaking about before with a school psychologist because a school psychologist could also do assessments. And we were having such a high number of referrals and assessments, it became important to have someone who could also take on that piece. We re-implemented Second Step, but with fidelity. We hired an in-district BCBA. We've been, this year especially, been providing a great deal of professional development on mental health topics. I actually have a psychologist coming in a little under a month to provide some in-service training around reactive attachment disorder. But there's been lots of other things. We contract with outside providers when that becomes necessary to do. And right now, I'm working on revising the behavior framework in the SRBI handbook to make sure our services are really tight and comprehensive and proactive.
No, no, I don't listen. I'm sorry, Tim. So tell us a little bit about your staff because you have quite a few special education teachers and paraprofessionals, how they work, what they do, how do they get assigned, how do they stay with students?
Sure.
Now, we've learned a little bit about what students look like, how are, who are the people that help you?
Sure. So we have special education teachers that work with students who have primarily have learning disabilities or a variety of disabilities that impact their learning. They do mostly push-in support, so they're mostly in the classroom when they can be, but sometimes they have to do some pull-out for some specific small group or even individualized support. It depends on what the child program is and what that child's specific targeted needs are. We have speech and language pathologists to be able to work with students with language difficulties or articulation problems. We have occupational therapists, we have a contracted physical therapist, as I mentioned before, the BCBA, and all the mental health staff that I talked about before. So we look at our cases, and Tanya and I are actually about to do this in anticipation of next year. And what we do is we go through all of the students with IEPs, we look at all of their services, and we break them down into reasonable caseloads for each special education teacher. And often, it's by grade, but sometimes it's by the particular area that needs remediation. So for instance, this year, we have a district-wide person who only teaches students who have dyslexia, and that's all that person does, and it's a full-time job. So that's one way to divide services at the elementary. We tend to have our teachers more grade-divided. At the high school, we have special education teachers who are subject-specific. So there's certain teachers who teach math, certain teachers teach writing, nobody does it all. So it's divided that way. We've looked at whether or not that might be a better model for the middle school as well. We have some programs that are really important. We have our preschool program that's for students who have been identified by birth to three and for regular peers to participate in that program. We have Student Behavior Center at the middle school for students with behavioral challenges or students who have intensive learning needs. We have the Developmental Learning Program at Killingworth Elementary School that's really very much at max capacity right now to work for students who have intensive learning needs and really need a lot of repetition and support and sometimes a parallel curriculum. We have transition services. Trying to think if I left anything out, I think that's a very-
Paraprofessionals, what role they play.
So their role can vary greatly. It very much depends on what they've been hired for. So sometimes, we have paraprofessionals who work with the student one-to-one. That's usually for students with pretty intensive behavior needs and sometimes very intensive learning needs. We have more pairs who work with more than one child, a child like two to three. Sometimes, only have pairs who support a whole classroom. So again, it depends on the student's needs. What we do is we go through student by student and look at their IEP and look at what they need. We try to figure out how to best place them so we can make the most use of our resources while setting those children up for success. And then we figure out what we, who we need in each building. We go right down the list and we assign people to each student or group of students or classroom or grade level based on what the IEP reflects.
So since your IEPs are changing all year long, so are your staff needs, and you hire and change and switch as the needs of the children?
So that's true. And so a great example I can give you is that right now, I'm finding I need to reassign somebody because our preschool numbers always go up during the course of the school year as students turn three. So the beginning of the year, we don't have many needs, but around this time, they start to really increase. And so the preschool always comes to me and says, we're going to need this many pairs. And I go, well, you will, but not on September, September 1st. You'll need this over time. We have some new students who are moving into the district this month who are going to need additional resources, and so we're looking at allocating those, and it's possible that we may need more staff as a result. Sometimes, a student who has not presented any problems in the past suddenly experiences great difficulty and has the need for more supervision and support. So it really is a little bit fluid, but never capricious. We never assign somebody without trying a lot of things. I can tell you philosophically, student independence is a huge priority for me. So when we have adult supports, we're always looking for ways to fade those. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Any other questions? I have a question, I'm more about the student experience. In the prevention part, that sounds more like prevention for the student than him or herself. But you talk about, you teach them how to behave in a situation where someone else is kind of a source of the challenge. So in other words, in a situation where, I have a question in my head, I have to get it out. The prevention sounds like it's my own behavior, right? If I'm the student, it's my own behavior. But how about prevention in a given situation where they can assist another student or manage? Do you have any, do you teach the students any skills in a situation where someone else is being the challenging, you know what I mean? Like more, I guess it's more social skills, but it's-
We certainly, I think, addressed that in part through Second Step. I can also say that the schools all have their own specific assemblies that can address things like anti-bullying, how do you stick up for a peer? They have a variety of different programs and presenters that they may bring in to address some specific things as well. So we definitely look at providing that through our curriculum. There's also learning in the moment that's going to certainly happen. So if a teacher finds that she has two kids who've had a conflict, who need some help and support, and working that through, that's going to happen in the moment. And we have counseling staff who can help when that starts to become more escalated. But certainly, that kind of conflict resolution, how- But certainly, that kind of conflict resolution, how to stand up to a bully, those, how to demonstrate empathy, how do you support someone in need, that's all going to fall under our Second Steps curriculum, Second Step curriculum. I like to make it plural.
Which is relatively new.
It's relatively new. I guess I would say it's new this year only because it's being implemented with fidelity. Last year, we didn't have it at all because of budget cuts and our, the person who used to do it was a school counselor and she left. And the years before that, it was taught, but as part of developmental guidance. So it just included some other pieces and wasn't quite as consistent as we're implementing it now.
And it's not really in the classroom setting? It's in the assembly setting?
It's typically in the classroom. Sometimes they might have classes go to the library instead. It depends on whatever space is available, but it's class by class. Sometimes classes double up, but that's not, that piece is not an assembly, that's smaller group. And it also includes a home component. So there's information and sort of homework, but more like activities for families to be able to do with their children to reinforce some of those things at home and to make sure that parents also have a sense of the language that we're using with their child to impart these skills in case they want to use the same kind of words. Can be very effective.
And then my other question is, how do, I would think that it's around confidentiality. So I would think that it's confidential, whatever any student's position with you is confidential, right? Whatever program they're on is totally confidential.
Yep.
But it's challenging, I would think, for kids around a kid that's having challenging behavior because the experience of the kids that are around a kid who's having challenging behavior is nothing's happened because the fact that that child is in a program is confidential.
Right.
So how do you manage that? Like what happens when a student comes in and says, you know, so-and-so did this? And you say, you can't tell that student or parents.
Or parent.
Communication.
Right. There's like so much confidentiality, but then that can be... That could be challenging. And it's funny because I'm responding to you right now more as a former principal than as a current director of Student Services because it does come up. And confidentiality is number one.
It's huge. I mean, it's critical.
Yeah. But what we really try to do is just teach generally, you know, how do you work through a conflict? Forget about any labels that may or may not happen. If there's a conflict between two children, let's talk about how to work through that. If there's a child who's creating stress for another child or disrupting the environment, how do we provide better supports around that? How do we help the other students also develop some tolerance and some empathy on their end? Kids, in my experience, are remarkable with that. And it's harder, of course, for us to talk to parents about that because we can't give them the specifics that I'm sure they would prefer to have. But a lot of times, I think most times, there's usually a very trusting relationship with the classroom teacher. So I think when the classroom teacher says, you know, "Here are some things that we're doing to make sure everybody's safe and everybody's needs are being met," I think that can be powerful. Or having the family come into the school to have a more in-depth discussion usually takes care of it.
My impression of the students that are not causing the disruption is that nothing's being done about it. Like this kid is getting away with this, which in reality is probably very much not true.
Right.
But you can't tell the other student that. So it leaves it in a tough, it's a tough spot. It's a tough spot for the kids that are witnessing the disruption and going, "Well, nobody's doing it." You know, "The kid came out of school when it's safe." You know, thinking that no one did anything when I'm sure there's something going on.
So second, what Chris said, the more difficult cases, first of all, I would agree that it's frequently more difficult to talk to the parents than it is to students.
The parents of the disruptive kid or...
Of either. Either. Particularly not the disruptive kid, you don't have privacy because they know.
Right. They know.
But the classroom parents, that's a more difficult conversation. It's more, this is more difficult around the subtle cases than the less subtle cases. The less subtle cases, the kids who are more profoundly impacted, who are mainstreamed, the kids actually get to know them. Nobody ever sits with the kids and says, "This is Johnny's IEP. This is Johnny's disability."
Right.
But kids know. The kids learn. They went to school with Johnny since kindergarten.
Right.
And they learn Johnny.
Right.
And they know that. And I've heard kids say this. I've had really profound moments of kids explaining, I've seen kids explain to their parents where, you know, Johnny acts out in class, not any student's name, by the way. But Johnny acts out in class, you know? And I've seen other kids explain to their parents or they see them acting out. No, Johnny just gets frustrated sometimes and that's the way, but he does get back to class and is good. And I've also seen cases, been very, again, profoundly touched by cases where when we have at times not been able to meet students' needs and after a period of being in our school for years, they've had to be, to get to correct programming, they've had to be outplaced. I have seen their classes actually actively miss them. There might be an adult kind of perception that the class might feel better Johnny's, but in fact, they knew Johnny, they liked Johnny, they kind of accepted, there's an acceptance, there's an empathy, there's an empathy for... And in fact, I've then seen that student come back after being outplaced and be unbelievably warmly greeted and almost celebrated that Johnny's back.
Children are absolutely amazing in their ability to get things that we don't directly explain to them and understand differences. They're consistent.
And it is harder to explain to adults because they don't live with the child every day, that particular child every day, and we are encumbered by the privacy. And so it can be a very difficult dance. And Chris is right. What we try to emphasize is how are we servicing their, let's talk about your child. If you're concerned your child's being disrupted, you know something? We can't have them. Your child needs to be educated. And how are we servicing your child? How are we protecting your child or keeping your child safe emotionally, physically, whatever may be, listen to the concerns they have, respect them, but we can't talk about Johnny. It's hard.
And we think especially in those more subtle cases because in the...
The more subtle ones are harder.
The more kind of obvious cases.
Kids tend to know, parents tend to learn.
I understand. That's right.
I think too, well, maybe not parents today, but certainly in my generation, we didn't have a lot of Johnnys in our class.
No.
And that was such a missed opportunity. And I know my son, who's sixteen now, he used to go to school and there was a little girl in his classroom who was very violent. She had a variety of conditions and he came home one day with a scratch. And of course, I went mother bear about it. He said, "Oh, Mom, that's just, that's just," you know, I'll use the name Suzie, "that's just Suzie. She can't help it. She doesn't have good breaks." He wasn't upset about it at all. He had a different level of understanding than I had the opportunity to have because he got to go to school with her every day and she was his friend. So not that we want anyone scratched or upset, but it's just nice to know that our children can, you know, understand those kinds of things. And I think it is a very valuable experience for them. I wish I had had it. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Can you elaborate, please, with a few more details pertaining to the physical management training? Specifically, is there any component that helps educators to identify not only physical manifestations, but emotional manifestations?
Well, physical management training, I have to say, is fascinating. It really teaches you so much. And there's a very big emphasis on a child's non-verbal language. So you really look to see what does that child's body language look like? Is that child starting to, you know, maybe gesture or pout in a way that indicates that things are escalating? And if they do, then how do you adjust your body language so that you're a little bit more passive and not challenging them? How do you listen for cues? The voice is getting louder, so then how do you make your voice softer? So it's really heavily based on listening to what the child is saying certainly, but also looking at their presentation and figuring out what you can do yourself to help bring the whole situation down. Now, if that can't happen, it's important that everybody knows how to be safe so that if a student suddenly starts to throw things or hit somebody or run away, you know, that we have safe ways to contain that student until they're calmer. And we also talk a lot through that training about how do you calm the student? We talk about giving the student space, not using too many words when they're upset, and really being very respectful and very calm. And so it's a great training. We do it every year. We do a refresher training for anyone who's had it before. New staff members who haven't had it before go through a full-day training. And we use PMT associates in Middletown. They're excellent. Does that answer your question?
It does. It sounds like it's a very much in-the-moment type of response. Is there anything that stems from that that is, leads to the type of follow-up that may be obvious?
Sure. Well, I think once you have a student who's been that upset, the team needs to meet and say what happened there and kind of have a debriefing, if you will, and say, "Okay, what was the trigger? You know, what was the student doing or saying? What could we do or say differently? How can we set this student up for more success next time?" You know, we really try to be able to anticipate what might be setting a student off to the extent that we can so that we can then change the environment a little bit to help that student feel less frustrated or help that student find the words to describe what they're feeling instead of acting out. We tend to see this, as I said, more at the elementary level where students are still working on their coping skills. So certainly, if something like that is happening, that's a big reply to us, that we need to talk about it and thank and contact parents and make sure that our programs and our plans are appropriate because we don't want that to recur. We don't want anything decollete.
It also does feed a data pool on, I mean, if we are, if a student's behavior is triggering PMT-type activity, that's going to, not only does it lead to a meeting, but it's going to trigger a data set on that student that speaks of the scope, scale, and nature so that individual instances aren't individual instances when they're recurring. They become, you know, one incident is one, two is two, three is a pattern, and onward.
We're always looking for patterns.
You're always looking for data and patterns that tell you how are students escalating, de-escalating, evolving, evolving.
Yep. So we can adjust what we're doing to make sure that we're responding the best way possible.
Exactly. So I think that's where I'm going. Are there triggers or at least observations that teachers are trained to look for that are perhaps manifestations before they become physical, or at least physically threatening that might raise concern and prompt some action before they escalate?
So typically, students who are likely to have that kind of incident happen already have some kind of behavior plan in place. And so that means that a mental health staff member or BCBAs really done a lot of research in terms of what are the triggers? What should you be looking for? Sometimes we have scripts. So if a student starts to do this, then the staff need to do that with the idea, again, of bringing the situation down. And so by the time the student gets to the point where we're using really significant de-escalation strategies, it would be very unusual for that student not to already be on our radar and for some internal professional development to already happen around that child. Like I said, with behavior plans, knowing what triggers are, knowing what patterns are, knowing what words to use that are going to bring about the best possible outcome. And then sometimes there's also been some consultation with outside providers. And they can be very helpful too in terms of saying, "This is what I'm teaching the student to work on. These are the words I'm using." And they go, "That's great. We're going to use those words too." So gather your resources. And parents sometimes have some great strategies as well. When he does it at home, this is, we just, we give him time, we give him space. And so you go, "Okay, let's give him some time, give him some space." It's really collaboration. No one person can figure out all of the answers. But typically, the teacher has already been very much clued in and has a good bag of strategies to draw upon in those kinds of situations.
And it's not just the teacher's active strategies. It is the passive, it's not passive, but the intake strategies of the teacher to pick up the earliest possible manifestation by the student so that it's caught and moved to the strategy to apply. The lowest-level strategy is applied as the lowest-level manifestation. So proactivity is, the basis of PMT actually, is really being proactive and picking it up before it gets to any size.
Absolutely.
So you're basically talking like a stress thermometer kind of thing?
Yep.
Yeah. We actually teach kids to talk about, you know, how they're feeling, to be able to rate up a scale from one to ten, to be able to talk about if they're feeling, you know, red, yellow, or green.
I was going to say, that's what I do for, and we do. We have green, yellow, orange, red, so you know body size, tapping shoulders, different things that are, that you see, I mean, they, you know, they're physical, they might look the same, but literally, this means, okay, we're going from green to yellow. So that's basically, I think, what you're talking about.
Yes. You probably know too, they have trouble identifying sometimes what their bodies, their body signs and registering what that is. Sometimes that's just a process that has to develop over time. And we try to teach them, you know, helping get better at that.
Do we have time for any more questions?
Sure.
So I'm curious about the staff. So they go through a lot of professional development. For some staff, this is their job, and for other staff, they've got a lot of children to teach. So how is your experience with the professional staff in terms of their willingness to work with children and to develop these skills? And how do you create a sense of accountability to stick with it and deliver through it so that the children have the best chance to succeed?
I have to say, first of all, and I've only been here a year and a half, but I've been absolutely impressed by the professionalism of our classroom teachers at every level in their sense that every child is my child and that I'm as accountable for the student having a hard time as I am to the student who's excelling. I've been so impressed. And I think principals are great at pairing children with the right teacher, so there is good chemistry and a good sense of match. And I think that's such an important piece. I think all staff members who are working with a child who's challenging need a lot of support in the sense that they're not in it by themselves, that there's a team around them. So again, they can debrief, share strategies, have professionals to consult with. I think that's huge. And I find myself that teachers need to feel heard and they need to know that they're not in it alone. And so we really, I think, naturally provide those kinds of supports. This district is very, very good at that, having worked in a number of places. And I think certainly, if we had a teacher who needed a little bit more support, that's a great professional development opportunity. Have that teacher work with behavior analyst or school psychologist or myself or whoever can really do some talking and training around that. But for the most part, I'm finding that's not been an issue at all, which is good.
Also, shifting gears a little bit, social media. So what role is it playing at the different stages of our children's development? And what do you, I don't know, what do you think we should be doing about it? Are we doing enough about it? Are we playing the role we need to? Do we need to be doing more?
I mean, that's a hard, that's a hard question to answer. I can say that the middle school and high school do do a lot of education around the use of the responsible use of social media and internet resources. Certainly, we see that the choices that kids make on social media can have an impact, even if they're using it at home. They can make choices that do come, it can come into the school environment to cause a disruption there. And if that happens, then we really have to help them work through that. It can be very, very challenging. You know, students have a lot of power at their fingertips and not always a lot of sense of how to best use it, not always a sense of, "If I put this out there, it's out there forever." You have that whole digital footprint concept. That is taught, certainly at the middle and high school level where I see this happening the most. But certainly, it's not going to challenge, I think, for society really, it's not going to challenge. Really try to use those teachers in the moment and try to help the kids work through any posts that they made that were unkind, that could be construed as bullying, inappropriate pictures that might have been shared, you know, anything that might have happened. We weren't really hard to support the students. A lot of times, those students will end up in my domain and we'll look for ways to make sure that they're okay because it can be very stressful when something happens like that. Sometimes outside providers are helpful too.
Some of the effects of social media, we're really just beginning to understand because this whole idea of social media as a potential site for bad behavior is one thing. That's a little more explicit. We're really starting to understand and studies are starting to come out and show is the effects of social media when it isn't even explicitly being used in a bad way. This whole ability to see what every single one of your peers is doing at any one moment is creating whole new dynamics in self, especially since they generally cast everything in self, especially since they generally cast everything they take a photo of is often the best and the brightest. You know, it's the best, it's like, it makes it look like their life is, you know, lifestyles of the rich and famous, boy, I'm dating myself. But, you know, even when they're not rich, it's just, they're putting the best lens on it. And it creates a lot of sense of, that's not me, that's not what my life is. And there's really studies coming out showing social, you know, self-image concerns, social anxiety, depression, related to just normal usage, and this ability and pressure to see what everybody's doing and to show what you're doing at all moments. And that's not even bull, that's not bullying, that's not insulting, that's not harassment, that's just this weird fishbowl life that social media creates, where literally they're living in fishbowls.
And do you, do you have a lot of knowledge about what other schools and districts are doing around social media?
The districts, the districts that I've spoken to or have worked in previously have been doing a lot of educating, so making sure students understand how do you responsibly use social media, that understanding, like I said, of digital footprints, that it's out there forever, that it can affect future employment, future acceptance in schools. So how do you communicate in a way that's appropriate and stay away from the kinds of things that could really get you in trouble or create a situation you can't get out of? So I think, you know, a lot of schools bring in presenters, a lot of them have specific classes. I know Dr. Olson was recently talking about her plans in that regard. But I think we have to just keep educating students and reaching out to families, because I think sometimes families are not sure about the kinds of things kids are getting into. I, I know, again, as a principal, one day I had a, an internet safety presentation, and I was floored by how many elementary schools were using Snapchat and Facebook and Instagram. I wouldn't have expected it.
Agent of social media.
Yeah, yep, and it was very surprising. So I think, you know, just continuing the education is essential, and the kids are awfully sensitive.
The middle school had a year-long, and they continue, they're continuing this year, did a year-long set of workshops for both parents. They, they would have it on the parent's side, and then have it on the student's side. And then the same month, next month, they'd have it on the parent's side, and the student's side, around social media.
That was gonna be my next question. We have so much knowledge in all these professionals that we have, and all the things that we do with children. How do we help share that with parents and educate parents? And I know that Learn Early Educate, or Early Childhood Program, I think it's zero, not zero, I think, so we cut one through three, and they really help their community develop, and it might be special ed identified needs kids, I don't know, but, so it's two questions. How do we help parents utilize the wealth of knowledge that we have, not only because we're interacting with their children every day, but because we're very knowledgeable and educated professionals? But two, then also, how do we help this, these folks with children who have yet to be in, be in the school system, to start to develop and use the best knowledge available to develop good children in a way that'll prepare them for the school environment? And then vice versa, how do we take in the information from parents about what they think, about what's going on, and how they feel about stuff, not only about their kid, but just concerns, fears that they have?
Sure. So I would say, I'm just gonna say.
And this is probably in the special education dome and outside.
Absolutely. That's why I was gonna say, I'm gonna just take my part of it.
Okay.
I think when it's on my plate, there's, there's at least two pieces that I'm thinking of. One is that we get brand-new parents into preschool, which is such a great opportunity to immediately start partnering with them, and usually birth to grade is involved as well. And really talking to them about their child and what their needs are, and really talking about how we can support them, what resources we offer. The preschool team does a great job of that, in my opinion. And when they bring peer role models into the program and do some play-based observations, they also follow up with the families with a lot of very specific feedback. And so there's a very close partnership between the parents and the staff members. And I think at, at my level, it really becomes very student-specific. So it becomes less about what we do globally and more about what we do for Sally, do you know what I mean? And so we try to make sure, I was at three PPT meetings today, and at all three of them, we, the whole team really, we strive to make sure our language is understandable, to make sure we're communicating information, to make sure the parent is being heard, to make sure they understand that after the meeting, they can still come back for more questions, that we're always available. We also really try to help families, especially when they have children with more significant disabilities, not just think about, say, fifth grade, but to think about age 21, how you get hooked up into outside services, what kinds of, I was at a meeting today, and we planned an evaluation that didn't just reflect the tests that we needed, but the tests that I know the family will need when they contact outside resources. That's our obligation, in my opinion, to make sure, because how would the parents know? They would, it's our job to know. And so we try very hard to set everybody up with knowledge and success in the future. So the more global pieces is really regular ed. For me, it's a little bit more specific. But certainly, our handbooks reflect that we have mental health staff, that there's lots of support available. And I think the principles are very, very present.
Do you work, which was learned, at all in the early childhood development?
A little bit, I've, I've done a little bit. I know the preschool teachers go to their roundtable regularly. I'm involved with Con Case, which is through Learn, so I get a lot of their information and a lot of their contacts. They have a lot of information, they're a good partner.
Chris, I think we're gonna leave it there. Thank you so very much for this time.
Oh, okay, yes.
Really appreciate it.
So see the article I wanted to.
Yeah, I know.
Chris, the two things you're handing out, the, the presentation and the article?
Yes.
If you shoot those to me electronically, we'll have them sent to all of the board members. We'll send it all, yeah, but that way we catch the people.
Keep it for the archives.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You guys very much.
Keep me late.
I think we'll move on in our agenda to the Curriculum Council report, if we could, which just met this afternoon.
Sure, so we had one topic in the Curriculum Council earlier today, and that was around calculus offerings. So right now, our calculus, our AP Calculus program is a, what's called an AB program, so it's basically a semester of college calculus in a year of high school. The proposal is to add a BC option, so that that would be a year of college calculus in a year of high school. So it would be, you know, one or the other, or, or any of the other math options that we have, just adding a program. And we won't be seeing it specifically on our budget this year, because they're actually looking for a new calculus book to replace a 2006 edition that covers both classes anyway. So if they're replacing the calculus textbook as a normal course of, of textbook replacement, that would cover the BC requirements. So no add to, other than the standard book replacement.
This has been, the calculus class has been an evolution over the last eight, nine years or so, where we've taught AB calculus, and there were few kids who would take BC by virtual high school, but very few. And the number of kids in AB was very small. There was only a handful of kids in AB calc. We've been growing, with, with the effort to continue to strengthen mathematics education, but also promote kids to aspire to higher levels throughout our programming, including mathematics, our AB calculus class has become fairly significantly large. And just pure data will tell you that if you have a large population in AB, there's going to be a population in there that's BC appropriate, but it's sitting in AB. And so.
A, A, B, C.
So, so these are both, these are both advanced placement calculuses. AB advanced placement calculus is a year of college calculus, no, excuse me, a semester of college calculus taught in a year. So the pacing, it's all about pacing, is drawn out. BC is a year of college calculus in a year of high school, so it's taught at the college pace. You know, it's.
We already do this with physics, so the UConn physics class, you can take UConn Physics Four, which is a semester of physics in a year of high school, or UConn Physics Eight, which is a year in a year. So those are two options.
The four and the eight represent the UConn credits.
Yeah.
You get four for the four, and you get eight for the eight.
Yeah, that's what happens. It's the same, it's the same on the eight.
Yep. And so we just have more kids accessing these, it's great, this is great. I've been waiting for this.
I'm excited. My son has a senior, his cross, his, that's his AP, is 28 kids.
Right.
Twenty-eight kids, and then.
They have two sections, they used to have.
No.
This year, they had two sections.
They did.
They had two sections, and one was high in the twenties, I heard it was like fourteen, which was beautiful. But still, there was like forty kids in AP calculus, which is, but remember, we only offer AP calculus. We used to offer calculus.
We used to offer plain calc, non-AP.
An honors-level calculus and an AP. And then, actually, it was Sarah's senior year, so that was 2016 graduation was the first year that we had eliminated, I think.
Yeah, so we felt more and more of the kids that were actually sitting in honors calc could do AP.
Well, there's, and I freaked out, I'm like, calculus? But you know what? It was a calculus thing. It was a good thing, just that little extra push, and you know what? Then it helped in high school and college, so it was a good thing. But the BC is, I'm so excited about that, yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah, for our kids who are in science, math, or engineering track, BC is really a good thing to have.
And that's due to go next year.
Kathy, you were saying you wanted to get the subcommittee together as well at some point or something?
Yeah, so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be bothering the subcommittee members, Eric, Brenda, Nora, and Ivy, as my subcommittee. We're gonna be doing some work, and we're gonna meet in January and then do some work in the year on strategic work, follow-on from some of the work we've done. I'll send her out an email, I know Eric, Brenda, oh, sorry, Nora aren't, aren't here, so I'll confirm that they're still interested.
Any other questions about Curriculum Council?
Okay, let's move on to the building committee. And I put an invoice in front of you, which we can get to in just a bit, but I think we have a couple of updates. Howard can fill in the details. The simple one is solar, which continues along the track that we've been talking about. Some of the racking has been delivered, and Shay has been great about getting right up on the roof and doing the installation. And so that timeline continues. There's another delivery, I believe, that's either to come or it has arrived. And then the other piece that we've been telling you about is the arrival of the solar panels themselves, that is still projected from mid-March of 2019. And that hasn't changed. Shay is asked about it each week, and to the best of their knowledge, that timeline has not been disrupted. So that's the simple one. I think there are other more complicated pieces, Howard.
The boiler project, bouncing off of what I shared with you two weeks ago, after the meetings were held, and then, so we had our big meeting that Tuesday, Tuesday, no, Monday, it was Monday, that's right, it was Monday of last week. That didn't produce some of the results that we would have liked, but within 48 hours, the results have reversed, and MJ Daily, the boiler company, has taken responsibility for the movement of the boilers into the correct position.
Correct, not correct.
Yeah, correct, the right, the right position.
Yes.
And in fact, today, they have now finished, hang on, I'm opening up an email that came in literally five minutes before this meeting opened, it's relevant. They completed their drawings, what are called the coordination or shop drawings, that actually do all the exact measurements, and actually will guide the riggers and all people who will move it into the exact location and everything that will need to be done. They have shared those with the engineer, and right before the meeting, the engineer, in fact, signed off on and okayed those drawings as meeting all code and specifications. And so they will now go back to the, to MJ Daily, who will take that PCO, the change order that we talked about, and will now remove that piece from it, because that's now part of, it's not part of a change order. And then we will have, be able to analyze the rest of the change orders for, are they normal change orders due to unforeseen circumstances, or are they change orders that the owner requested, but what I've asked them to do is line up what original design would be against every owner requested one, so that we're able to look at cost of change. This is what we want, this is what they would have done, and we're able to do a cost-benefit analysis and decide whether it's something we want, or say, no, thank you, we'll go with your original design. So that will put the authority back into control where we want it in our hands around those items, and finalize it. There was one change that was put forward that we're not sure, we, we just want to study it because it would absolutely decrease the run-up time to this. The breaching or the, the duct work, chimney work that comes out of the boilers, because they're moving them, would need to be refabricated, because it's now different angles and different lengths to get to the chimneys to get out. And that creates, any fabrication creates a run-up time or lead time. But they brought up the idea that if we replace what is sheet metal breaching with black metal breaching, black iron breaching, with an insulated black iron breaching, then you can actually fabricate it on-site to the angle specifications you need, and that eliminates a lot of the run-up time. Our, our analysis on this is that the, our, our take on this is the analysis of the two options doesn't slow us down, and so we might as well look at the two options and then decide whether we want to go with the, the sheet metal, the original spec, and say that that lead time is okay, and the extra two or so weeks that it creates, okay, or we decide the extra two weeks is important and the black iron work would be appropriate.
Which is a better product, if you know?
That's exactly what we'll need, we'll need analyzed. I don't want, I mean, that's not something I just want to, like, toss a coin on. I want to see all the pluses and minuses, performance-wise, cost-wise, et cetera, and figure that out. You know, there are pluses and minuses. One has a longer lead time, so that's not minus. One has a shorter lead time, that's a plus. One, but there are other pluses and minuses that we'll, we'll get the engineer to walk us through, and so that the building committee can make an informed decision around it.
The other piece is heating the building, which is being done by the three.
Yeah, heating the, the three, the three boilers running at their capacity, and they are running at a higher percentage than they will typically when the other boilers come online, are effectively heating the building. We are setting, we, we are being very conservative, so we're not setting the building back like we normally would at night, and so the building's not cooling down at night, therefore the boilers don't need to recover the heat in the building in the morning. When more boilers come online, we can go back to recovering, or back to setbacks. In turn, you know, yes, they're running at a high, they're running longer and they're running at a higher percentage, but with fewer boilers running. So when you talk about overall fuel usage, that's not necessarily, you'd have to do a lot of, like, we'll have to wait and see how this plays out, because there's no way to predict with fewer boilers running. So these are more efficient boilers, they produce higher BTUs, that's to our benefit. But, and then the other thing that we're, that I just want to remind you, just because it got lost in the analysis around the table at one point, because there was concern about, and I brought it up, we live in power outageville. You know, in my eight years here, we've had plenty of power, some of them fairly long, and buildings can really chill off. Our boilers at the high school are on the emergency generators, so they don't go down during power outages. And we don't chill that building like we do other buildings. We don't chill this building, we don't chill that building, you know, because they're on emergency. So that's not as big a factor. And so onward we go. We're looking at, you know, we're probably looking at anywhere from, depending upon which design group we go, once they actually start working, we're probably looking at anywhere from four to eight weeks. But the project is now, for the first time in a while, actually moving.
And during that work, the three boilers are gonna not be disturbed?
No, that's correct. The three boilers, this will not impact the three boilers. They are installed properly.
And they're running.
And they're running, and they're controlled, yeah.
And have to.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just a minute. I remember an earlier explanation of the repositioning. It seems like there's been additional change made to the proposal, they were going to be separated slightly.
Actually, it got rolled back slightly. Originally, it went two ways. It first went to they needed to be moved on the pad, one, along one plane, okay, forward-backward plane. And then there was discussion about would they need to be moved along the forward-backward plane and the right-left plane as well to create the clearances. Would I, I still didn't know the answer to that until tonight, when I got that, that email that said the engineer has looked at the shop drawings, which are real-life measurements, not estimations and not blueprint measurements, you know, real room coordination. And just moving them in the front-back plane gains the clearances that need code, spec, manufacturer spec, and warranty.
In that instance, though, wouldn't the exhaust devices, since they're all moving the same distance, wouldn't the exhaust system that you're discussing move along with them?
Sure, that's the breaching problem. That's exactly what, so you have to now create, if it's sheet work, if it's, it's sheet metal breaching, or duct work, or chimneying.
So it's just from a device.
Biologist here, guys, I'm doing my best.
It's just a device from the, from the exhaust unit.
Oh, yeah, we're not changing the hole in the ceiling. It's the idea of getting from there up to that hole in the ceiling in a flush, in a, so if you move them forward, you're changing all your angles. And so if it's fabricated sheet metal, it has to be fabricated.
That unit doesn't move.
No. Is my understanding, again.
Just a.
Neurobiologist, not HVAC guy.
Just a question, process-wise, what will this board be asked to approve or not approve as far as these?
There's no way to know at this point. Until that PCO gets changed and we see what comes forward, and what doesn't come forward, and then what makes it through building committee and doesn't make it through building committee, all of the steps of the construction project process are still in line, and should be, and it's important they are, which means that it goes from installer to engineer, back to installer, to engineer. When it's finally signed off, it goes to building committee, building committee to board if decisions need to be made within the board's purview. You guys established what those are, change orders that exceed, et cetera.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on what is still to come for us.
And to confirm.
So my answer was pretty unclear, because we don't know yet.
The process works, and, and we'll stick with it.
And then just to confirm your statement, MJ Daily's taking ownership of the.
The fact that they're not in the current, they're not, they weren't placed in the right location first.
And they're bearing all expense.
They are taking responsibility, which includes cost for moving them into the right, originally designed position. I agree.
Job well done.
Yes.
Uh, wait and see.
Yes, I understand, I understand.
We're inching.
Yeah, I continue to be a Missouri resident, show me, and we'll see. But I agree, that we now have people moving in actual agreement, actual coordination drawings, actual ownership of who owns, you know, I talked about attribution, attribution of who's responsible for what work and finances. We have that now.
Speaking of costs, as I said, I put the invoice, the latest invoice from Shay in front of you, because we do need to approve that as a board, the building committee has given its approval of it, recommendation. Recommendation is to approve payment. As I mentioned, the racking has been delivered and installed. And as it continues to be delivered, it will be installed. We're still waiting for the panels. And as you can see, the bulk of the contract is yet to be paid. There's more than $1.4 million still to go to Shay. But from the work completed, I think the building committee seems satisfied with the level of commitment that they've shown. Once the racking is in place, I think we've been told that there'll be a little bit of a lull period, because until the panels come in, I don't believe there's any real work for them to do. But this is the invoice we have in front of us, and I would ask for a motion to approve it unless you have some questions about it.
It looks like they haven't charged us for any racking yet, even though some of it's been delivered.
Is that on the... It's on the second page, I think.
Well, I'm looking all the racking. I don't see any.
Oh, you're right.
It's on here, but I don't see... Which is not a big deal. I just thought they would have pieced that all of it.
Well, I'm sure the next one will, because that will reflect the delivery that we've gotten, I think, already.
Um, no, there's...
But I thought they were looking at column D, right? Well, if you look at...
It's like A, B, C.
Yeah, there is some roof... There's $20,000 for roofing rack mounts railing.
Right. Okay. I see that. But actual racking and the racking construction.
No, this is largely for the inverters and the circuits.
Well, actually, no. Because they came in December. Didn't the racks arrive... They didn't arrive in November? Do they arrive in December?
Uh, no, they arrived in...
It was early December.
The bases were...
But I'm saying, this is November 30th. This is an address on November 30th. I was thinking that they came in November.
No, first week of assembly.
They were supposed to, though. I didn't write that down.
Yeah. That's where my head was.
On the approval of the invoice presented of $158,041.05.
Awesome. Any further discussion, questions, anybody?
No, I think all the discussions we've had related to it have been supported, but yes.
Okay, Jim, you can call the board on this one.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Which leads us nicely into our project financing discussion, which is item 5B under new business. And Suzanne and Eileen especially have been working diligently with our bond counselor. And as has Howard, of course, but that one without saying. And we are still trying to wrap our arms around the bonding piece, so I'll leave it to Suzanne to explain.
So, for the board, originally, our schedule was to bond in February. We were to have been done with all of our projects in their entirety. And hopefully, if not, the large majority of reimbursements from the state would have been had at that point. Most of it would have been done. And probably residual, what do you call it, drainage would have been left. And you would bond the project and you'd move forward. We have actually a couple of choices in the scheme of things. We can continue to target February as our bonding time, but not bond the whole project.
Suzanne, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
On February 27th, can you put a figure on what we will owe on that deal?
Yes. Thank you. That's an important factor. So, on... So, at the end of February, we will own approximately $8.1 million in bank loans for all the short-term loan financing we did to fund the project, which was exactly as we planned to do in order to pay for the project. And then, the idea was we would bond and close it out.
So, those... The loans are... The short-term loans are due on the 27th of February?
Right. And those short-term loans were taken out at the very beginning of the project, somewhat into the middle of the project, and then, of course, into the end of the project. So, by hook or by crook, we need to pay the banks back. So, we can do that a number of ways. We can bond a portion, the overwhelming majority of the project, because we have spent the overwhelming majority of our money. We can take another short-term loan out for the difference and then bond again. And the bonding again would not be as involved going out to the public for bond. It'd be going to get a bond, a bank bond, which is much less expensive. And then, we can decide how long we want the bonds to go out. Ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. Obviously, the shorter the duration, the more we save in interest payments. So, we'd like to make it as short as possible without putting a burden on the operating budget associated with that. The other alternative is that we borrow that money again in short-term notes, the $8 million, and just bond once at the very end of it. And while it seems counterintuitive that doing twice would be anything in comparison to cost to doing it once, it's actually about the same amount of financing costs associated with legal, administrative, and the trade-off is you pay interest in one way when you bond twice and you pay interest in another way. And if you can take it through all that, if you only do it once. So, anyway, the decision to do the bonding in February needs to be made by January 6th. So, it's going to be... Needs to be made prior to the board meeting again. So, the board has two options. The board can delegate the decision to the finance committee to make a determination, and we can do that. Or... And you would have to have a, you know, or finish our analysis, which is underway, and get that done. Or the board can decide to have a special meeting associated where they come back together before the 6th for that particular item and discuss it if you felt like it needed to be discussed at the board level. So, it's really up to the board. It's... I think there was an expectation that this probably would have gotten done in the finance committee anyway. But that's really up to the board as to how comfortable everyone is in doing that. So, I guess the question is, what's everybody's point of view about that?
Just to clarify, the January 6th date is the date that we need to set things in motion. Bonding takes a series of steps across a series of time. That if you backward... What you do is you backward engineer it. You say, "If I want to bond by this date, then by this date, we need to have made the decision." You don't have to have all of the information in place. For example, we'll still have time to drill down on what the exact final number would be and some of those components. We won't have forever, but we will have some time. But by January 6th, you need to have a strategy.
And the only decision we have to make by... Is if we want to bond in February and not just roll it again into notes, then we have to make that decision by January 6th. If we decide we're going to roll into notes, then with that pressure is off to make that decision... Time period is off to make that decision.
And rolling into notes, the way we discussed it, I thought, was that it buys us some time to get to what we hope will be the end of the project, where we'll know things.
Final bonding.
Yes.
Final bonding.
The final bonding. The August piece versus the February piece. So that we have better information. We'll know what our reimbursements were, presumably.
Right.
Well, we might even have...
So, there are pros and cons to both. So, Joanne is outlining some of the pros of postponing bonding to the end. And one of the questions is, what is the end? Right? So, we've got our projects in lieu of being complete. So, again, if we short-term borrow all that money, picking that right date to how long those bonds should... That short-term note should be is critical. Because if not, you've been borrowing it again. And each time we borrow, it's quite costly. There are pros to bonding twice. If you bond in February, you lock in ostensibly lower rates for the long term. And you also are then just having a residual of the project. And if you can bond enough, you might even be able to pay off the rest of the project with the reimbursement and/or just take a bank note to complete out the project. So, there are pluses and minuses both. The first thing that we needed, and we're missing it just by a day here, is just the numbers. So, if the numbers come out and they're indifferent, meaning it costs as much to do this as it does to that, and it's not... She whiz. It costs $100,000 to go this path. Boy, there's got to be a really good reason to do that, because it's that much more costly. Then, at the end of the day, if it's indifferent, then we have to ask ourselves, what's the benefit to RSD 17 and the community that's paying for it at the end of the day to go either way?
Can you please remind us who is on the finance committee?
Yes. So, I am. Peter is. Joanne is. And Eileen is.
I know.
Some of the... It's a surprise, yeah.
Can I make a motion to...
Can I? Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Let's do that right now. And then, we'll see what...
Sure.
So, what's the priority for making the decisions? Is it just financial? It's like which one is cheaper?
A lot of it has to do with it.
Yes. Yes. Math is part of the equation. However, if there are risks to doing either one, meaning you're left with uncertainties that put you in a vulnerable position, then it wouldn't be wise to do it, no matter how much you save. So, we really... Part of it is really stepping back and assessing the circumstances. The boiler project going in a positive direction is a big plus to being more certain about things and not worrying about that project hanging out there for another year, because we're going to be doing whatever we're doing to get it resolved.
And then, the solar doesn't get completed till March or energized until May.
But luckily, a lot of that legwork is already done, so just the panels putting them on. But we literally had a lengthy discussion about this yesterday, but we didn't have this boiler information yesterday. So, we were like all over the place with the risk factor. That's a huge component.
But as good as the boiler is... As glad as we are at the boiler news...
It's a start.
Even I'm still... It's just the start. Like, we finally have it moving again. Until I actually start to see boilers move and split, yeah, like... It could go. It's... I'm still waiting.
And solar panels, should we have a take in solar panels?
Oh, no, of course not.
The symbol shows another $1.4 million.
Yep, absolutely.
But believe it or not, the solar panels themselves is not a huge expense. I mean, when you look at what we've already paid Shay for all their work and our balance to them, even looking at the numbers, you would think that the panels themselves were the majority. But it's actually so many other pieces to that.
So, if I think I know where you might be going, so go please.
All right. I would like to make a motion that the board defers the decision to the board of finance subcommittee.
Okay. Okay. Awesome. Okay. Any further discussion? It certainly takes away the peace of having to bring the board back into some sort of special meeting between now and January 6th, which is a Sunday, by the way, so...
Right. We gather the 8th, so the committee can update you.
True. Right.
It's only a decision regarding the path, not the actual action.
That's correct. Yeah.
Right. Because nothing will be done on the 8th. It'll just be that word hanging in certain sections.
Well, that's a good layout, it seems to me. Why don't we... If there's no further discussion, why don't we call the...
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Kathleen.
I'm sorry.
You're the only person not on the...
It's a trust. But you can. Go ahead, Jim.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Joanne?
Yes.
Thank you, Brenda. I think we're just about at the end for our last public comment. If there is anyone who would like to speak to the board, this is your opportunity.
If I can to. Absolutely. So, the board understands I need an executive session for a student matter immediately after that. And then, after this meeting closes, I need to speak to you about a negotiation issue that is a law, not a meeting issue.
Anyone for public comment? Last call. Oh, Jeff. Jeff, we have a sign-in sheet to...
He can sign in after, for God's sake.
Yeah, that's fine. Either way, we can spell your last name anyway, so we'll get that right.
I'm Jeff Sturges. Most of you here know who I am. I communicated with you on a lot of different opportunities about the closure of HES. There's a lot of issues, I think, as we discussed it, both economic for the town of Hattam, educational with... Is there any class sizes and whatever? And I think some of that may be more of a communication problem than what's going on. But nonetheless, it exists. And I would just... I don't know if I'm allowed to do this or not, but how many people in the room are here because of HES?
Some already left.
All of us.
I think when this started, it was a fairly small group of us that were pretty vocal. And I just would encourage all of you to look around and see that it's not a small number of people that are really seriously concerned about this decision. I think in looking at what you've all done to arrive at this decision and this action, I'm not here to say that what you've done is incorrect, but more incomplete. I think there's, you know, a lot more factors that should be considered that take a school away from a center of town and potential ramifications of what it could be long-term. One point that I would bring up is, and I don't know a lot about it, in reading about how Morgan went from their old school to their new school and what the town has been left with for a bill, I'd like to know, has anybody looked into saying, "Okay, we're going to save some money in our restructuring"? But when the population does swing and we're forced to build new infrastructure to support that, what is a potential addition to another building or acquiring new property or whatever? What might that cost? And is that going to cost more than what we're saving for the period of time that we're able to appreciate these savings? For a simple example, if we're going to save a million dollars a year for ten years using your timeline, theoretically, that gives us a $10 million bank account that we could then cash in to pay for a structural improvement to support a population when it increases. Does $10 million buy a big enough war chest, if you will, to add on to the burr? Or build another school when we need it? Or are we then going to be forced to bond and be behind of where we are if we were to keep the school open, albeit in a diminished capacity, to have it in reserve when we need it? I don't know that answer. I don't know if you know that answer. All I'm asking is that before we make this a final action and it gets sold to someone and it becomes an irreversible process that we can't fix, I'd like to see that that gets done and that it gets answered. And in the meantime, some of the other structural changes that we come about with the restructuring, the school times, the class sizes, the bus routes, the costs that are associated with that, be explicitly communicated, which right now, as I look around, I can't find the information. I'm human, and I could easily be missing it. But I've tried, and I can't find it. So, I would highly encourage that if... Until this stuff can get answered and hard data supplied, both for your benefit and for the town and for all of us that are concerned, if we need be, we open to pausing this, if need be, for another year or however long it takes to make sure that these questions and these concepts are fully vetted, so that when we make the decision, it's the right decision for everybody. Both for you as a board and your responsibilities, and also for those of us in town that are... You know, we want to support you. We elected you. But we also look at it with a critical eye and make sure that, you know, what's happening is what's right for everybody. I guess that's about all I've got to say. But thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
My name is David Law. I live in Haganum. I bought a house and moved into Haganum in the past year. A large part of my choice in purchasing, moving to that property was the location of a school and the town atmosphere. I understand with that decision, all this would go away. Having made a decision like that, I could see how that would impact my decision and anybody else's to purchase in there, which would obviously affect property values and things like that. So, you know, for a lot of people, I think they would feel the same way. I'm against that decision, but I'm not in your position to make that. I will say, having moved here from another community, which was in California, so a lot of us seem to have come from out of state, I was a member of a school board. And they closed the school. Now, it was a private school, and the decision to do that was outside of the school board. But I experienced it, and I was a person who looked at all the numbers. And we looked at other things outside of that. The community is like that. But having them... Watched them close a school, I then watched what happened to the community that the school was in. And it's not a pretty sight. And it's, it's not a pretty sight and, and it does affect a lot more than just the finances of the district. So I, I just wanna say, if your decision hasn't been finalized yet, I would look at the big picture before you finalize that decision. And that's really all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a really quick comment. You guys all know me. Hey, Jane, thank you for being here. I'm sorry that we don't have a larger representation of the board tonight, it looks like a lot of people are absent. But thank you guys for being here, I know it's a busy time. I just briefly want to point out that though the camera is focused on this meeting, there is a larger crowd over here. The group of concerned constituents keeps growing, keeps coming and voicing their concerns and is more and more diverse, even during this busy time. I myself haven't done any Christmas shopping, my kids hopefully will have something for Christmas, but we'll get to that, this is important to us. I'm glad it's important to you, I'm glad that you're here. And I just want you to notice all of these people that are here and who didn't just come here for the initial public comment, who stayed for the entire meeting because we are concerned, we are here to work with you. And everything that Jeff said, I can't say it better, so, thank you. Truth. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And you sold our buses and we had no say. You built this school and we had no say. And now you wanna close another school and you have no say. You're here to represent us and we're speaking and you're not listening. And I think you need to change your plans because this isn't right. You know, the busing has cost us a lot of money, this school costs us a lot of money, you're gonna close the HES so you can build another school in seven to 10 years. That's gonna cost us a lot of money. So you need to think about this. We're here for a reason and you're not listening and I think you need to.
Hi, my name is Jenny Law and I just heard from my husband. What he didn't mention was, we specifically moved back to the end of this district. We moved from California, class sizes 30-plus. I don't know if disaline, the schools will do that here, but I can tell you that there is just nothing productive about large class size. My kids got here October last year and they were behind because as Terry said, most of the kids, English was not a native language. Of course, we don't have that here, but that being said, I also knew that coming here, they were gonna get better attention, they were gonna get more in-depth teaching that they could not get in California because of class size. My kids got here and they were behind, they were ones, twos, at least for elementary school. My older son complained, you know, I'd do what they asked, they asked for more. I had to explain, they asked for more because they know you can do it, but you weren't asked for that in California. Now they're much better, they're more up to speed. My fourth grader's having a fall. He will move up to fifth grade, so closing HES doesn't impact us by school, but as other people have said, it is the heart. You close that school, you're gonna kill the village, you're gonna kill it. And there's already enough stuff that's closed, for whatever reason, that the town business planning can't get business in, I don't know, but you close that school, you're going to kill it. The bank has already left, the market's concerned. But, you know, aside from all that, I came here specifically for these schools and if we end up with crowded classes, it's no good for anybody. And I'm not sure that a short-term money savings necessarily makes sense for the long term. Thanks.
We may have to make Jen our last speaker because we are getting close to nine or so.
Most of you know me, Jennifer Law, Jennifer Petrello, this is not gonna fail, I mean, I guess.
Take this thing down there, it'll stay.
Yeah. I was listening to your social and emotional wellness and I thought it was very ironic to have that subject tonight because I'm not quite sure if you guys realize the emotional and social impact just on my side. She cries very often about this decision, as do I, as do many people. And I don't wanna drive down from 54 and see another vacant building. But most of all, I guess, you know, the economic, everything, the numbers that I've been through, you guys have all seen it, it's emotional. You're wrecking my life dream. My whole family went there, I want my daughter to go there, I want my little daughter to go in a camp. And that has such an impact on this town that you're making, literally, there have been, at least up here in the beginning of our thing, and they're not here anymore, they left and somebody closed on a house in Guilford. And that's all people and friends of our community that are leaving because of this decision. I know each and every one of you feel that you made this decision with the information that you were given. And yes, I've sat with each and every one of you, listened to your opinion, we listened to why, but it still doesn't make our town okay. Our town doesn't want this. I can name every single building, starting with Miles's empty Dunkin' Donuts, a brand new building, all the way down. If we had a thriving center that could give a great company an ROI in that one little spot, maybe that would be great, but you know that we are already having struggling businesses in this town and we don't have the traffic to have somebody big come in there, anything other than what it should be in this school. And I don't mean any disrespect, but the Hazen family donated this land with the intent for always to be used educationally. Now I understand in 1954, there was a quick claim and released, you all of those stipulations, but I don't know how to sleep at night, you know, we have that family that still donates and does grants and all these things for kids and education, though you feel okay just selling it. That's, I, I, that, that doesn't sit well with me, it doesn't sit well with the Hazen Foundation, anybody in nature's classroom, all of that. Like I had said in one of the prior meetings, pick a pro and come. Which list is better? I think you all put the answer to that.
I think we will have to end there and ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss a student matter.